We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Fabian, who will then give us an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet together today, Lord. We ask that you have our task as we serve our constituents, Lord. We ask that you guide us. Thank you.
May it, man. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Chippin.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
Present.
I would declare that we have a quorum, and I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's activities.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second. Been moving in seconded. Any discussion to that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Looks like we have one item of business this evening. Okay, we're gonna get some training on Robert's Rules of Order by Keith Gingrich. He presently serves as the Chief Deputy County Attorney in Teton County. And he's also the attorney for the Teton County Board of County Commissioners. And a lot of boards in Teton County, Library, Fair, Lodging Tax, Planning Commission. For the past 10 years, he's conducted classes around the state regarding meeting procedures. Mr. Gingrich has taught the county government 101 classes for all new elected county officials, and has taught at the Wyoming Planning Association meetings to help the Wyoming House of Representatives, and was the chair, oh, let's see, Planning Commission, under, helped the Planning Commissioners understand meeting procedures. Mr. Gingrich served five terms in Wyoming House of Representatives, and was the chairman of the Judiciary Committee for many years, and served as Speaker pro tem. So we'd like to welcome Mr. Gingrich here this evening, and turn the time over to him.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Gave a pretty good explanation of who I am. The other part you should know is I used to be Rick Soler's law partner, so I really like the lawyer that you have for the city. And that's probably the number one rule I have to point out. Anything I say is just my opinion. You always need to ask your city attorney. So anything that ever comes up legally, it's for your city attorney to answer that, not for... So I won't be giving you legal advice tonight. But I did give you a copy of the Open Meetings Act as promulgated by the Attorney General's Office, just so you have that available to you. It's a wonderful document that the Attorney General's Office put out. I helped write that law back in '05, and then we revised it again in '08 when I was in the legislature. And then I handed you a meeting procedures from the Teton County Planning Commission, but we actually use these in all of our boards across Teton County. I just brought, I grabbed this one because it was the easiest one for me to find. So let me just give you some background. You covered most of it. I used to be the, Rick and I were the city attorneys over in Lander for a long time, in Dubois. And then I actually got hired to go to Teton County to be a prosecutor over there, early 2000s. And so I've been over in Teton County a long time now. And I actually represented Teton County in the Wyoming House of Representatives for five terms. I was the chairman of Judiciary Committee, and more importantly, I was the Speaker pro tem. So if any of you have ever been down to the legislature, Speaker's not normally the guy sitting in the front. He's busy in the back room making deals and running around and stuff. I was that guy. The Speaker pro tem's the guy that sits up front at the chair, and you got the gavel, and you're calling on people. And all day long, people are trying to pull tricks on you and try to figure out ways of outmaneuvering you procedurally, and you gotta keep up with it. So that's some of my background. I do go around, I was in Kemmerer yesterday, I do go around, and I'm not charging your city for any of this. So if any of this stuff you find completely useless, you've just wasted one hour of your time. You didn't waste any of the city's money. But we try to do this, a bunch of us do it across the state, so that we're all pretty consistent and that we're all helping each other out. Your former Public Works Director, Bill Urbiket, I used to call him all the time, and he would help me with procurement questions. And so I always felt like, you know, go back and forth. And that's an important point. Usually, I take a lot more time with this class, usually with county commissioners, it takes me about four hours. But one of the things we always do, we always hand out a sheet of paper at the beginning. It's a map of Wyoming with all the counties on it, but they're not labeled. And I always say, label all the counties, and if you can, put the license plate numbers down. There's always one guy in the room that can do it. There's that one guy that remembers their eighth grade civics, and they know all the license plate numbers, and they know every county. The point of the story always at the end is, most people can identify the counties that surround them. So if you're on the western side of the state, you pretty much know some of the western counties. They never know the eastern side. I was over in Nyaburra County, we did the same thing, and they couldn't identify any of the western counties, didn't know any of the names of them. Point is, is that when you're at WAM conventions, or when you go down to legislature to lobby, it's so important to interact with your fellow city councilmen from around the state, not just the ones in your own community, because you learn from each other. And so that's why I come around and talk to others, because I learned so much from others. People always ask, we always have lots of policies in Teton County. We write lots of policies on procurement and all different types of things. People always ask me, where do you get all these? And I always say, Sundance, Crook County. Crook County and Teton County almost always have the same policies, because I'm best friends with Joe Barron, their county attorney up there. It's that type of relationships across Wyoming that across the state that you have to build, and I point that out. So let's, let's turn to this document. This is, this is meeting procedures that our Planning Commission uses, and mostly I know counties, that's what I do. So a lot of this, you're gonna go, eh, that doesn't really work for a city. That's fine. You just ignore that, and you try to think about it some more. But it's always good to have a meeting procedure, some type of procedure, a document that you're going to follow. And always at the, on the top of ours, we put, you know, the Wyoming Constitution says, "The right to petition, and of the people peaceably to assemble, to consult for the common good, and to make known their opinions shall never be denied or abridged." Close to the First Amendment on the U.S. Constitution, but Wyoming's a little bit better. I always love the part where they put, "and to make known their opinions." I always appreciate that. If you flip over to the second page, the second page says, "Purpose and Authority" at the top. If there's nothing else you take away from this tonight, it's just this page. This is the only page you have to pay attention to. Because if you understand this one page, you got it made. This is all you need to know. So what's on this page is, these are the main things that you have to follow. And it's, I know it says "Commission" all the way down, so you just fill in the word "Council." Council must act as a body. It's such an important point when you become on a board. I sit on the school board of Teton County. I sit on our school board. And it's so hard for me sometimes not to run off with the mouth and go run and tell the newspaper what I think is this. So many times, I gotta back up and go, what do my fellow board members think? I can't run off and be stating opinions of the school district by myself. I need to go back and talk to my board. And that's why we set up policies as to, when do you, when do we talk? Does the chair talk solely for us? Can we break away from the chair if we're disagreeing with the chair? When can we go talk to people? But when we're actually acting, we're acting as a body. One of the worst things that always happens in a city or a county, you have, you always have that one elected official that think, oh, I got elected, so I run the place now. Now, the mayor might be, you know, he has some abilities, but you have to be careful that you're not calling up the police chief and saying, hey, I want you to do this today, I want you to do that today. But you're acting as a body, that you're, you bring it up as the full body, and you say, hey, I'd really like if the police chief could do this. And the whole body goes, yeah, that's a great idea. Let's do that as a group. Let's tell the police chief that. Or let's tell the mayor and ask the mayor to ask him that. Those are the types of concepts of acting as a body. The second concept is, the commission should proceed in the most efficient manner possible. Okay, this is where you're gonna be really disappointed with this talk. It is to tell you not to use Robert's Rules of Order. It is to tell you that you want to work in the most efficient manner. And people that get caught up in the rules sometimes aren't operating in the most efficient way. Let me give an example. So, these are Robert's Rules of Order. Pretty thick book. I can sit here and we can talk about them tonight, and it would take me a few hours to go through this book. Pretty complicated little book. It was not designed for city councils. If you actually read the foreword to Robert's Rules of Order, it'll tell you the history of it. It was designed in the late 1800s for large conventions of groups like the Elks and the Moose. Elk and Moose and Knights of Columbus, they were all forming, mostly for life insurance purposes. But they were forming, and they would have these huge conventions in New York and other places. There'd be a thousand people in the convention hall. They needed a way to control that, to have these discussions. That's where Robert's Rules of Order came in. Robert's Rules of Order are extremely difficult to use sometimes when you're in a small group setting. That's why lots of things have changed. So like in the legislature, we don't even use Robert's Rules of Order. We use this. This is called Mason's. This is Mason's Rules of Legislative Procedure. This is what I know pretty, pretty well. If you ever wanna buy a little book, if your city is out there looking for something to buy, this is called Robert's Rules of Order: Duly Revised in Brief. This is designed, this is Robert's Rules of Order, but pared down for small groups. And it's a great book because it actually says, here's how you make the motion, here's the actual words you should use. So this is pared down. This is Jones's Rules. You always can find the one person on a city council or a county commission in the state of Wyoming that served on student senate at the University of Wyoming, because they usually know Jones. Because that's what the University of Wyoming uses at their student senate. I used to serve on the student senate down there, and this is what I learned under. It's this great little book, and it's short pages, and you flip to the right page you need. And you always will find that one, there's quite a few towns across Wyoming that actually use Jones's. And you know where that came from. Years ago, someone must have brought that back from UW, and suddenly that little town started using Jones's. The point of telling you all of that is, all of these work. They're all fine. The key is consistency. Consistency is the rule. What that means is, is that whatever rules you come up with, whether you're using truly Robert's Rules of Order, you're using a modified Robert's Rules of Order, you're using the Jones Rules, you're using something else, you're being consistent. You never lose a case in front of the Wyoming Supreme Court over substance. You never do. I've been there multiple times now, representing different local governments. You win or lose based on procedure. It's always that someone screwed up the procedure, mostly due process. When someone says the word "due process," all they mean is, notice, opportunity. Notice, opportunity. They make due process sound like it's some complicated legal concept. All due process is, you gave the person notice of the meeting, so they knew to be there, show up, and you gave them an opportunity to talk. They got up, told you what their problem was, you listened, thank you, sit down. Notice and opportunity. That's due process. What the court is always looking to is, were you arbitrary and capricious? You'll hear that constantly with the courts. Was the city council, when they made this decision, being arbitrary and capricious? And it usually will come up in the context of licensing, liquor licenses normally, or a planning decision where you're issuing, you know, some, something to do with planning. Those are usually the realms where that shows up. The court will look to, not whether you not, not you made the right decision. That's not what the court cares about. Whether you made the right decision or the wrong decision. That's substance. That's policy. They care about is, procedurally, did you give the person due process? Notice, opportunity. Third part on that map. Must act as a majority. Pretty simple concept. Every councilman must have an equal opportunity to participate in the decision-making. This one's pretty easy. So when I've been chairman of different committees, there's always that one person that doesn't speak up. For whatever reason, they're pretty quiet. You just have to make sure when you're chairing a meeting that you turn to that person occasionally, and you go, "Councilman Jones, did you have something you wanted to add? Were you okay with where we're going with this?" And usually Councilman Jones will go, "Yeah, I'm good. I'm good." But being able to check in, check in with that person, to make sure that they're feeling as though they're participating, that they're part of it. And that's just a nice way of being a chairman, that you're constantly checking in with people to see where they're at. Because there's always those one or two people that love to talk, you know. That would be me on a board. I'm constantly, Mr. Mayor, I have something to say, I have something to say. Check in with those people that aren't talking. Find out where they're at. Because there are a lot of times, they're not real happy, and you don't know that unless you check in with them and say, where are you at with this? Consistency, we already talked about. And then, the action should be the result of a decision on the merits and not a manipulation of the procedural rules. This is where the legislature is king. We learn how to manipulate the rules, and there's guys like me down there that know how to manipulate. So decisions don't get made on the merits, they get made on who knew the rules better than the other guy. That's not a great way to run local government. So you have to be careful. You have to be careful. There's always that one guy that really knows the rules. At some point, sometimes you have to say, yeah, I know that might be the, but let's be consistent here, so we're not gonna violate the rules. But let's get to the merit. What were we trying to decide here? And then lastly, you accomplish meetings in the spirit of openness with the encouragement of public participation. If you follow all those things I just said, that's a perfect meeting. You don't need to know too much about Robert's Rules of Order. If you just keep those basic premises in your mind, everything works out, usually in the end. I just put a quote there near the bottom of that page. It's from Felix Frankfurter, who was a Supreme Court Justice. And he said, in this case, Baumgartner versus the United States. He says, "One of the prerogatives of American citizenship is the right to criticize public men and measures. And that means not only informed and responsible criticism, but the freedom to speak foolishly and without moderation." Have we not all been there and seen the foolish and the without moderation? But what Justice Frankfurter was getting at is, that's an important part of public participation. Not everyone gets up to speak to you, understanding what they're talking about. They don't know all the facts that you know. They didn't get perhaps the staff report you got. They perhaps just heard it down at the local McDonald's, they were having their meal tonight, and they heard the city council's doing this. You need to get down there. And they run down there, and they know no facts, and they just get up and start talking. That's government. That's how it works. Your job's not to get mad at them, not to say, hey, you need to educate yourself. Your job is to listen, say, there's more facts to that. Can I help share with you a little bit? Can I explain to you how our website works, that maybe next time you might wanna look at the staff report before you come down here and talk? You know, how can I help you? Those are important ways of being good city, city council men and women, is understanding people are going to speak foolishly, and they're gonna speak without moderation. We have done, I did a meeting one time. We were approving a major development in Jackson, hundreds of houses. Hundreds and hundreds of people showed up to speak. We're in a, we're in a middle school auditorium. We had to regulate how people were gonna talk, you know, were we gonna cut off, cut them off? Were we gonna just let them talk as much as they want? And that always becomes a big question. When do you cut someone off from talking? When do you say enough's enough? My rule's always been, don't ever set a time limit. You can do that. You're allowed to do that. The courts allow that for you to say two minutes per speaker if you're being consistent. The problem is, some people just speak differently than others. It takes some people some time, sometimes, to make their point. What helps as a chairman or a mayor or whoever's leading the meeting, is to sometimes, I always write down what they're saying, making their points. And, you know, sometimes it's hard to write down something, because I'm not getting what the point is. And then I repeat it back to them, and I say, sir, I've heard you say these three things. People love that. When you repeat back to them what they think you've heard. You say, I've heard those three things. We have a lot of other people to get to tonight. Was there any other point that I needed to know in order to make a good decision here tonight? A lot of people get the point then. They're like, oh, I've talked long enough, he got my three points, I should sit down. The only time you ever hear people complain about government is when you, they weren't treated fairly. And it's never actually the decision they're mad about. They could've came in and said, I want you to vote aye on this, and you voted no. That's not usually what they get mad about. They go, well, I understand you voted no. What they get mad about is they don't think they got treated fairly. I didn't get to speak, others did, you cut me off early, you weren't listening to me, you were playing on your iPhone while I was talking. You know, one of the biggest problems I find with local governments lately, and I'm guilty too. My school board, we all get these little, we all have an iPad in front of us, or I, a MacBook thing sits up. We're all staring at the screen because we're supposed to use these board docs. We're not supposed to have any written documents anymore because saving paper or something. So I have to stare at the screen. Well, people always think I'm sitting there, I don't know, playing solitaire, not listening to them. It's one of the hardest things for me to remember, to flip the screen down, put it down, and stare at the person, and say, okay, what were you wanting to tell me tonight? That, more than anything, helps people to understand that they're being treated fairly. Okay, so that's the, me on the soapbox. Now we'll actually get down to business here. So in this document, you'll see here, the first chapter is about meetings. And a lot of that, probably, it doesn't apply to you all, and that's something your attorney can actually talk to you about more than I can. Just, I'll just point out the clear basics. In Wyoming, there are three types of meetings. Regular meeting, special meeting, emergency meeting. Those are the only three types of meetings Wyoming recognizes. You may call it something else, and everyone does. In our town, we call them workshops, work sessions. We have voucher meetings. We have lots of names for lots of stuff. In reality, they all come under one of those three categories. A regular meeting is a meeting that, and it could be in your ordinances, or many counties do it at the beginning of the year, they do it through resolution. It's where you have said, we will meet on the second Thursday of every month. That's our time, seven o'clock at this location. Those notices, if you've done it through a resolution, or you do it through your ordinances, whatever way you do it, those are regular meetings. Those don't have to be noticed. There's no notice required of those. The notice, and notice is special meetings. Special meetings are any meeting that's other than your regular meeting. Any meeting that comes up that wasn't on when you normally meet. Those, eight hours notice. Eight hours notice. We used to have all these different rules about when you had to give notice and stuff. And the legislature narrowed it down. They said finally, eight hours notice. Notice has to go to those that have requested in writing notice. So someone has written to you either by email or by some written communication that they'd like to receive notice. Many towns and counties, everybody does it a little differently, so I'm sure you guys do it a little differently than I'm used to. That's cool. No problem with that. But just always remember, and then emergency meetings, they come up, you don't see them as much in counties, probably see them more in cities. We always use them whenever we're gonna do a freeze on a, on a planning issue. We have to put a freeze in Teton County. We'll do an emergency meeting, because unless you do an emergency meeting, people will come and file their applications, when they know you're gonna put a freeze on. Open meetings, we talked about, I handed out the document to you. My rule for that is, always call your attorney. If you're going into executive session and you're not sure if you should be in executive session, call Mr. Soler, say, is this something that really comes under executive session? A, that covers your butt, because your attorney told you you could do it. Number two, you guys are always protected. So if anybody sues the city, they're not suing you personally. Your personal assets are never on the line. Except violations of open meeting law are fines against the city councilmen personally. The city can't pay that for you. You have to pay the fine. It used to be, in '05, the rule was, it was actually a criminal violation, and you could actually get more than a fine. It was a criminal charge. It got changed to just a fine a few years ago. But it's the one thing you should always keep in mind. It's the one thing that you could actually get nailed for, that if you improperly go into executive session. That's why I always suggest to people, if you're any, most of you know, I mean, it's a personnel issue, it's a litigation issue. I mean, I've gotten into some weird ones, though. We had, our Jackson Lake Dam, we thought was gonna break at one point, so we went into, it was national security, you know. I'm not sure it was, but maybe it was. But, you know, it's in there. National security is one of the ones you can go into executive session. Cheney used to come to town all the time. We'd have to have meetings about how we were gonna, the Secret Service, and everybody was gonna ordinate. And that was always under the national security exemption. I think Teton County might be the only one that was routinely going into executive session for national security purposes. I'm gonna move on. Move over to Conduct of Meetings, Chapter Two. It's on page six. And how we write our rules is this. We say, and you'll see there in Rule, Rule Two One, we say, these are our rules, just this document, these are our rules of our meeting. But if any time we don't, these rules are getting in the way, a three-quarters vote can suspend the rules. So if there's some rule that is just totally screwing you up, three-quarters of you can vote, which is almost all of you, to suspend the rules. You don't do that very often, but occasionally it's needed. Rule Two Two there, we use that, and we say, you know what? Robert's Rules of Order is what we use. However, we're gonna use these, because what we've done, and you'll see this in a moment, we've pulled out the ones we like, the ones we use every day. There's a lot of them that you'll never, ever use. There's no purpose in you using them. But if there's ever any reason we need to, we're gonna go to this book. Skip on down. Flip to the next page. Page seven. So you all, you know, because you're a city and you know how you're doing this, everyone has their agenda. But this is more for if you have commissions under you, or you have any joint power boards that you do with the county, anything like that. It's always good to have somewhere in their rules what the order of business is. And everybody has their own way of doing things, how they want their order of business to go. You all, you know, just from watching, you just now, you seem to have a very orderly way of doing stuff. Move down to Rule Two Six, Recognition. No person may address the commission without the permission of the presiding officer or the majority quorum. So let's talk about addressing the council. I always tell people, be as formal as possible. People always go, oh, it's a small town, we don't need to be all formal. What I'd say is, whatever behavior you're modeling, is the behavior the people standing up to talk to you are going to model. If they see you being very respectful... If they see you being very respectful to each other, they see you using the actual titles, councilmen, last names. People are addressing the chairman directly. They're not talking to each other. They're talking through the mayor. They get the point. People sitting in the audience get it. They go, oh, it's a very formal setting. I'm supposed to address the mayor. I'm supposed to be very formal. I'm not supposed to, you know, maybe I know the mayor and so I'm not supposed to actually use his first name. The more formal you are, the more formal people out here will be. And I know it sounds odd, but the more formal you are, the more efficient the meeting ends up being. Here's what happens. People who are informal, and you've all seen it because you've all served on smaller boards. You're all trying to be buddies with each other. You're calling each other by the first name. You're trying to be polite. You're trying to, oh, did you have a motion? No, no, let's not talk about the motion yet. Let's sit and chat a little bit. And pretty soon an hour's gone by and no one's even put a motion on the floor. That's bad. Formality helps. Formality such as saying, Mr. Mayor. And you say, Mr. Mayor, that doesn't mean you just get to start talking. It's Mr. Mayor and you wait until the mayor recognizes you. It always cracks me up when people go, Mr. Mayor, and then they just start talking and they don't wait for the mayor to say your name back. The mayor needs to say your name back to you. Councilman Jones, yes. And Councilman Jones goes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What that exchange was I just did, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr., yes, Councilman Jones. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's what we call exchanging the baton. There's a district court judge, Judge Rogers. Uh, he's retired now, but he used to do this thing to lawyers. It was, it was called the pencil rule. And what happens a lot of times in court is you get real excited. You got a witness on the stand and man, you're going after him, man, you got him. And that witness isn't, they'll say, yes, and you're, and they keep talking. And you're like, no, no, I don't need you to keep talking. That's, that's just more extraneous information. I want to ask my next question because I'm going in for the kill. I got this question. I've, I've led you up to the cliff here and you start talking over the witness. That's bad in a courtroom setting. Judge Rogers always tells the story that when he first started out, the court reporter would actually use a fountain pen. That's how old Judge Rogers is. He said that if you would do that, court reporter would just put down the pen. So there's no recording going on of what's happening because the shorthand's not being taken down. This is before recording. Today that even happens. When the court reporter's sitting there doing shorthand with the keys and there's people talking over each other, he can only write one person at a time. You know, Mr. Gingrich said blah, blah, blah. Witness said blah, blah, blah. He can't say at the same time, Mr. Gingrich and the witness were both talking at the same time. He can't do it. So a lot of times court reporter just stops recording. So what a lot of times what Judge Rogers would do, he would hand out this pencil and he would say, Mr. Gingrich, you hold on to that pencil. I never, he never actually did this to me, but I would have been mortified. But he would hand you the pencil and he'd say, you asked the question. Then walk up to the witness and you hand the pencil to the witness. Now witness, you talk. Witness, hand the pencil back to the lawyer. Lawyer, ask your question. Lawyer, hand the pencil back to the witness. Now you don't do it that way with an actual, you know, talking stick or a baton or a pencil, but you do it through your words. The words, when you say, Mr. Mayor, what you're asking for is, Mr. Mayor, can I have the baton? I'd like to talk. The mayor may not have, that may not be the right time for you to be talking. The mayor may have some other thing going on like, hey, I was going to have staff talk or you know, more efficiently, um, I need to have this councilman talk before you. They actually had their hand up or they already whispered to me, they wanted to talk next. That's the mayor's prerogative, who he calls on next. So you say, Mr. Mayor, and the mayor says your name back. That's telling you, I'm handing you the baton. That thank you, Mr. Mayor is taking the baton. At the end of your conclusion of talking, so you talk, 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 make your point. At the end, say, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What that thank you, Mr. Mayor is giving a heads up to the mayor. I'm done talking. You can have your baton back. Everything always goes back to the mayor. The, the discussion always comes back to the mayor. The mayor controls the discussion and the motions always come back to the mayor. We'll get to that in a second. That's an important point to, to understand, always be addressing everything to the mayor. That also means, so let's say one councilman says something, the councilman next to that person has a question of that councilman. That councilman should not talk directly to that councilman. What we do in the legislature, we'll stand up. I know it always sounds funny to other people, but we'll say, Mr. Speaker, the last speaker from the great, wonderful, um, county of snow in the Northwest, he's made this statement and I was just curious as to why he believes that to be true, Mr. Speaker. Now again, no one got up and said, I think Keith, I think you're wrong. Instead, it was all directed to the speaker. So it's always a good idea to say, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Jones just said such and such statement. I would love some clarification on that statement if I could. I always thought A to be true, but he's saying B is true. Could you have him explain that more in detail? That's back to the mayor. The mayor may say, I don't have time for you guys to get into this little squabble right now. I gotta move on. Again, back to the control of the mayor, making sure that there's not all these, um, things going on. Also cross talk with the audience. You guys are a little bit better setting because you have a much, you know, great council chambers where you're separated. If you come to Jackson, they're, where they sit almost sits as an audience and like, you'll be sitting right up against one of the councilmen and you'll see it all the time. Like guy in the audience is like, hey, Joe, you know, you ought to do. And they'll start talking to the councilman like off the side, you know? That's bad. That's called cross talk and, and they need to, um, direct all their stuff through the mayor. Okay. Moving on. So flip over to, move over to, to rule two, one, five. You'll see that at the bottom there. Um, that's, uh, your actual motions that you make. So let's talk about motions. Now, um, the mayor pavilion and I were talking a little bit before the meeting. There's a lot of difference between being the mayor of a smaller town, the mayor of a first class city like Riverton. How you conduct business can be different. If, if you're in a small town, it's okay to not have a motion on the floor right away. It's okay to maybe have a little discussion first. When you get to the bigger cities where there's a lot on the agenda, that gets a little harder. So usually the recommendation is, doesn't mean you have to do it. The recommendation is that you try to get the motion on the floor as soon as possible. The reason you try to get a motion on the floor, why a chairman is always asking, can I, can I get, can I get a motion on that? Someone giving a motion on that? Because once the motion's on the floor, then people actually know what they're discussing. So let me give an example. So if I just say, okay, next on the agenda is the holiday party. Okay. Well, you might think I'm talking about Valentine's Day because that's coming up. Or maybe I'm just a really good mayor and I'm thinking all ahead for Christmas and I'd like to have that, you know, hammered out now. I also don't know, is it to have it on a certain day? Is there a certain time? Was there a certain place I wanted to have it? Was it, were we going to use Christmas or should we be more ecumenical and use the word holiday? Should we have that debate? These are all the questions. So if I just throw out on the agenda, hey, let's discuss the holiday party. That could go on for quite a while. But if I say, I'd like a motion on the next item on the agenda being the holiday party and someone makes the motion, I move to have a Christmas party on December 22nd at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. You know the date, you know what I'm calling it, you know, the time. So now you have the ability to, to discuss that and you have the ability to amend that. You can say, hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, um, make a motion to amend. I'd like to amend the time from seven o'clock to six o'clock. Okay. So now we're discussing the time. Or I'd like to amend, I don't want to call it a Christmas party. I want to call it a holiday party. You know, so you can have that discussion. Okay. That's one of the reasons why you want to throw motions out on the floor right away. The other thing that you want to do when you're doing motions is the mayor or the chairman or whoever's running the meeting needs to be constantly repeating the motion, especially if it's complicated. So let me give an example. Usually at this point I break up and we do, um, sort of interactive, but I'll, I can do this just by talking and think, um, if I'm making a motion and then somebody moves to amend, so Mr. Mayor, I move to have a holiday party on December 22nd at 7:00 p.m. in the city chambers. And someone else raises their hand and says, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilman Jones. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend seven o'clock to six o'clock. At that point, it goes back to the mayor and the mayor says, the motion is, on the table is the amendment to change seven o'clock to six o'clock. One of the worst problems you see sometimes is people get confused as to what they're voting on. Was I voting on the amendment to the motion or was I actually voting on the motion? Because I don't want to mess up here because I was actually a no vote on this motion altogether, but I'll vote on some of the amendments. That's fine. So if the mayor is constantly repeating, just to remind the council, we're on the amendment. The amendment is to change from seven o'clock to six o'clock. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, no. The amendment passes, we're back on the main motion. The main motion being to have a holiday party on December 22nd in the city chambers at six o'clock. And you see how I did that? A, I told you what, how the motion passed. I told you what passed and I reminded you where we're back at. We're back on the main motion. A good chairman, you'll constantly hear them saying, we're back on the main motion or now we're on the amendment to the amendment. You'll see that a lot of times, especially people that use it a lot, getting amendments to amendments to amendments. And then it gets pretty complicated and the chair has to keep track. What was I on? I was on the amendment to the amendment. Where you see a lot of that, a lot of times you'll see that in planning issues. We've done ones in Teton County where we'll have 80 conditions on a, on a, on a permit. You know, easily 80 conditions. We overregulate probably over there. But we'll have 80, 80 conditions. We'll be amending an amendment to an amendment on one condition of the main motion. That's when it starts getting really complicated and you have to just keep track. Okay, that's control. That's, that's keeping it going. So how this works is two, five, two, 15 there on the bottom of page nine. The ones at the top, so appeal, to adjourn, those outrank. So the ones above each one outranks the one below. So what that means is if two motions are made at the same time, there's always a ranking to them. A motion to appeal, a judge, a judgment by the chair or by the mayor always, um, uh, trumps everything. A motion to adjourn, um, to make, take a brief recess, question of privilege. I'm not sure if you guys use privilege, but I'll just give the example. Privilege is where you say, um, um, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, privilege of the floor, please. Is there any way we could turn down the heat in this room? You know, that, that's a privilege. Or it's really noisy, Mr. Mayor. Could, could we do something about the noise? Ask some people to step out for a minute? If you're ever trying to get the mayor's attention to just a simple thing like, you know, clearing the room, it's getting, you know, maybe the last group hasn't left and the next group's coming in for the next agenda item, but it's too warm in the room. That's called privilege. Mr. Mayor, privilege of the floor. Or if there's someone in the audience you wanted to introduce, you know? Um, your dad showed up and he's real proud of you being a city council member and you say, Mr. Mayor, privilege of the floor. I'd like to introduce my father and hands up. You see that all day long at the legislature, probably way too much. Everyone gets privilege of the floor to introduce people they know. Point of order, point of order gets used sometimes too much, but I'll just tell you what it's mostly for. If you think the mayor is, is, um, this usually where I see it is, and it's usually legitimate, um, when I'm chairing, um, I skip an agenda item. I, I'm just, I thought it was this one was next and you know, someone needs to point out to me, hey, you skipped a whole agenda item. The easy way to do that is say, you know, Mr. Chairman, point of order. I think you skipped an item. Oh, you're right. I did skip an item. Yes, you're right. More serious point of order is point of order, Mr. Mayor, I, I think you, you know, I think you ruled wrong on that. That's not how the rules work. You know, and that's when you sort of sit back and you have to figure out what the rules are. There's nothing wrong when anybody's challenging the rules. Never put anyone on the spot. You know, it's hard. It's a hard job, like making, you know, I've sat as chairman for a lot of times. I've sat as chairman in large auditoriums where like, um, uh, political parties are meeting and someone always has some bizarre parliamentary question. Sometimes you just can't come up with the answer right away. There's nothing wrong with saying, hey, let's take a five minute recess and we're going to sort this out. A lot of times that's a lot easier. Take the five minute recess, sit down with your clerk, sit down with your attorney and go, hey, do we know, what is the rule here? Maybe even the guy that brought the point of order, sit with him for a second, go, what, what's your point? What are you trying to get to? Well, I was trying to do this. Oh, I can do that. Oh, oh, that's your only issue. Fine. But sometimes if you're doing it like in front of everyone, then it becomes sort of adversarial and like, Mr. Mayor, make a ruling and you know, that type of thing. So there's nothing wrong with ever saying, hey, let's take a five minute recess and sort this out. You know, you guys don't have to do this division. Usually, um, you guys probably do roll call votes, so it doesn't really matter. The one I always love is, um, um, people that say, um, um, they'll say question a lot of times. People that aren't familiar with that, um, they think, um, the person has, she has a question. They don't normally have a question. Question means I'm tired of the debate. I'm ready for us to vote. So occasionally you'll have that one person on your board that knows to do that. And they'll say, question, question, question. Question means let's stop debating this. Let's get to a vote. We're, we've ran this into the ground. Or a lot of times somebody will say question when there's a long pause. So the mayor will say something like, any further discussion on this item? We're all sitting there and you can say, question. And the ma, and a lot of times chairman's looking for that sometimes. As a chairman, I'm always looking for that one person that will actually say question because I want someone to tell me, yeah, we're done talking, Keith, move on. So I can go, oh, okay. Thank you for the question. Question having been called, let's move to a vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. Eyes have it and we move on. That does not mean when someone yells question that you have to move to a vote. Sometimes chairman misinterpret what that means. Under parliamentary procedure, they think, oh, someone called question, we have to vote. The mayor can ignore anybody saying question. You can just ignore that. The only time you actually have to pay attention to it is when they move for the previous question. If someone says, I move for the previous question, that means I want to vote to end debate. I'm tired of listening to this go on for hours. I want to vote and I want to shut down debate. Doesn't happen a lot of time on city councils where you see it as in, um, more political oriented groups, um, where one small faction has seized control of the microphone and they're going to talk this thing to death. And you know where the votes are already going. Sometimes if, if everybody's talked, everybody's had their chance, there's nothing wrong with saying, I move for the previous question. That is a vote on ending debate. That's not, you don't go to immediate vote on the question. It's a vote on, okay, it's, the motion's been made for previous question. All those in favor of ending debate at this point, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no.[1635.73] Motion has it. We will end debate and we'll move directly to a vote on the question. The question being, whatever it is, and you move to it. As a chairman, you probably never should do that unless everybody's had a chance to talk at least twice. If everybody's had a chance, if you've been through everybody two times, and you'll see that, especially in a controversial issue, a lot of boards will do it this way where every member gets two times to talk. Um, you'll see that in the legislature, like on third reading, every legislator can only talk twice on an issue. And you'll hear them say that. Um, they'll say, "Representative Gingrich for your first time. Representative Gingrich for your second time." And then when you stand up again, they say, "Represent Gingrich, you've done your two." And you're done. I don't recommend ever doing that in a small city council setting like this, except if you have an issue where, um, um, you can tell it's gonna go on for a while. Tabling. Tabling is always an interesting issue. I always recommend never to use the term "tabling." Here's the problem with tabling. Tabling technically means that you are tabling it during the same meeting. So technically what table means is, "I'm not ready to discuss this item. I move to table it for later." The problem with tabling is you technically need to vote to bring it back. If you don't get enough positive votes, you may have just killed the item. So if it's something you actually want, tabling's not always the best way to do it. There's actually better words to use for what you're trying to accomplish. If you just want to postpone it till later in the meeting, there's nothing wrong with saying, "Mr. Mayor, I move to postpone this item to, um, after our second agenda item." Or, "I move to postpone this to, after our fourth item." Or, "I move to continue this to our next meeting." Those are better words. I motion to continue or I motion to postpone. Tabling always gets people really confused. You can also, um, what, what we've done in the past, I don't know if cities needed this, yeah, cities probably need it because we do it with liquor licenses. A lot of times, we need a specific time at our next meeting so the people know to show up at that exact time. Because we don't want to make them sit through everything. So we'll say, "We move to postpone this item to our next meeting at exactly 10:10." That means is, we'll be going down through our agenda. When we get to 10:10, we stop everything and we move to that agenda item and we deal with it. That way then people don't have to wait, um, and sit through your whole meeting waiting for that agenda item. We use it very sparingly, but it's some, it's a, it's a possibility. It's a nice way of treating certain people that, um, you know, maybe you didn't have your act together, maybe the staff report wasn't ready, and you feel bad for that person because now they're gonna have to come back and they're gonna have to sit through your whole meeting again. So you postpone it to a certain date and time. So that's, that's one way of doing it. Um, moving to amend, um, reconsideration. And again, this is something you're gonna have to consult your attorney and I don't know if you guys actually already have rules on it or if it's in your ordinances, but it's probably the biggest one that always causes the biggest, um, controversy. Here's what happens. You move to deny maybe a liquor license. Or you move to, um, to not approve some planning permit. And then you learn more information after the meeting. Like, "Ah, shoot, I should have probably voted the other way. Ah, yeah, that, that should have passed. And it was only one vote and it was sort of me that caused the problem. Boy, I wish we could redo that vote." Those are motions for reconsideration. Now, everybody has their own rules, so again, I don't know what your rules are. I'll tell you what we do. We say motions for reconsideration have to come on the very next meeting. It can't come after that. So if you miss it, um, at the next meeting, it's, it, it's a dead issue. Because you can't have something living forever. So what we do is say, "At our next meeting, you can make a motion to reconsider." The only person who can make a motion to reconsider is someone who is on the prevailing side. So if you lost the vote, you don't get to, you don't get to try it again. You have to be, been on the prevailing side, whether that was yea or nay. It depends on which way the vote was going. But if you were on the prevailing side, you can make the motion. Your second does not have to have been on the prevailing side. And then it's an immediate vote. You usually do not debate it. You just go to the vote. And normally, especially if it's a planning issue or something where rights are attached to it, like our liquor license potentially, what we do is say, "Okay, the motion to reconsider is passed. We will, can bring this motion back up at our next meeting." That gives an opportunity for the person who you're affecting to be at the next meeting. Because they may not know that you were doing, do this motion to reconsider. So essentially, you got three different meetings going on there. You have the initial meeting where maybe you denied. You have the second meeting where someone made the motion to reconsider. It passes. Then you have the next meeting where you've actually brought the motion back for the vote. One way of doing it. But that's usually the one that, that, that gets people, um, most confused. Probably easiest for me is to just answer questions because everyone always has those bizarre instances of, "This happened to us one time." I'll tell you the best one I ever got was, um, I was in Pinedale giving this talk and the guy raised his hand and he said, "Uh, what if a fight breaks out?" And I said, "Well, you should call, you know, your sheriff deputy and the sheriff deputy can come over and escort them out." And he, he goes, "Well, what if it's your mayor?" And I said, "Well, that's a little different." Does anyone have any good questions?
I, I do, Mr. Gingrich. Would you, uh, talk to us about ex parte?
Sure. So again, this is something to talk to your attorney about, but this is something that all communities are sort of grappling with. You'll see in there on page three, Rule 12. We sort of made up a rule for our planning commissioners and our county commissioners try to follow it too. So here's what happens. For most items that come before you on an agenda item, there's no big deal with you talking with people. Man, it's part of the job. People are gonna call you at home and complain about, you know, the barking dogs or whatever they complain about. That's very normal. But when it's an actual contested case hearing perhaps, or if it's an actual decision that rights are attached to, such as a planning permit, variances, things like that, that gets in a weird, weird area because at some point, you got to remember, you wear multiple hats. One hat is you're a landowner. You're just a regular landowner. You own things. You're a regulatory body. Wear that hat. And when sometimes beyond the regulatory, you're quasi-judicial. You know, if you're making a determination on a subdivision, you could actually characterize that sometimes as quasi-judicial. You're making a decision. Um, in our county, our planning director can make interpretations of the land development regulations. Those interpretations can be appealed up to the Board of County Commissioners. So the Board of County Commissioners sort of sit as the judge. The planning commissioner, the planning director gets up, presents his case as to why he was interpreting the statutes that way. I'll give an example. We just got into an argument over the definition of basement. We had a pretty good definition, we thought, but there was, an odd situation came up. The planning director gave his interpretation of how to read that definition. The applicant, the homeowner, had a very different definition. The difference was huge. It was essentially the difference between building a 8,000-square-foot home, which is what we restrict all houses in Teton County to, to building an $18,000 or 18,000-square-foot home. He wanted to put, count all of it as basement. Big deal. You know, it sounds so silly. We're arguing over the definition of basement, but it's huge. So in that case, the Board of County Commissioners has to sit somewhat quasi-judicial. They're ruling on what their planning director said. Yeah, he's their employee, but, you know, it's sort of equal. Another example is at the county level, the county assessor will come in on an appeal. Someone will appeal their property tax. County commissioners are, sit as the Board of Equalization for the county. Again, somewhat quasi-judicial. So the question becomes, can I talk to people, either party, my own planning director or the applicant, prior to the hearing? Well, there's two things conflicting there and neither one's wrong. One is, hey, I have the right to address my elected officials. I need to talk to them. The other conflict is, well, how do I stay impartial if someone's feeding information into my ear before I can hear the facts? So we try to create situations where, um, all that's put on the public record. So for the example of the planning commissioners, and that's the one that's sitting there in front of you, a lot of times the planning commissioners want to go out and look at the site. Which is a great idea. A lot of times, you don't understand what you're voting on unless you go look at it. Um, you need to see it. Well, you get out there and it's the property owner. And you're walking around and the property owner starts telling you stuff. And what do you do with all this information? Because the people that are opposed to it aren't standing there to counter it. So the guy whispering in your ear while you're walking around might be saying, "You know, A, B, and C are true." Then I get to the hearing and I'm assuming A, B, C is true because that's what the guy told me. But there's people in the audience that if they knew that I was basing my decision on A, B, and C, they would have stood up and said, "Oh, no, those aren't true statements. No, no, let me explain to them." But they had no opportunity to stand up and tell you that A, B, and C weren't true because they never knew you received that information. So what we try to do is say, "Hey, we understand. People need to talk. Need to talk outside of meetings. There's lunches happen occasionally, a developer." And Jackson's a little different because we have, we have pressure. Uh, big-time developers come in with lots of money and they want to take our county commissioners to lunch and they want to wine and dine you and they want to tell you why this, you know, $10 million hotel they're gonna build is amazing and stuff. That gets a little scary because you get into this weird world of, of potential, you know, public administration corruption and you have to be careful. So what you, what we do is, especially if it, not, it's not for every agenda item, but if it's an agenda item where rights are attached, many times we'll come back and we'll say, the planning commissioner will say, "I went on a, a field trip the other day. Um, the clerk attended with me. We have a tape recorder running the whole time during the conversation." And we've done this before where the clerk walks along while we're doing the field, field trip. So we have it all recorded, everything being talked. Works a little bit. And we'll say, "Hey, this is what we learned on our field trip. We learned A, B, and C." So then people know what we talked about. Or a planning commissioner can say, "Just want everyone to know before we, uh, get too far into this issue, I went to lunch with the developer and the developer, uh, shared these same drawings that we've seen and actually nothing that the staff has presented is any different than what the developer told me during our lunch meeting." Those type of statements usually help because it puts it on the record exactly who you talked to and what you talked about. It's a little bit more complicated when, um, people are talking on the telephone, they're calling you at home, things like that. Now, if they're calling you at home about dogs running at large, you don't need to tell everyone about that. But if someone's on the phone telling you, "You need to vote for this development permit because of XYZ," it sometimes helps to say that on the record. I don't have all the answers for ex parte, but I just sort of put it out there. I think it's an area where, um, there needs to be more guidance perhaps. And, and I know all the different attorneys struggle with it. This is how we deal with it. We put it in our rules, so we make it very specific. How you deal with it, that's up to your discretion.
Thank you.